It is 8:30 and we're ready to begin when you are.
Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting, the Board of Commissioners meeting for bi-state development to order. It is Friday, February 19th, 2021, 8:30 a.m. Myra, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Winmiller.
Present.
Commissioner Zimmerman.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Simmons.
Here.
Commissioner Pistello.
Present.
Commissioner Galladay.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Cox.
Here.
Commissioner Gladney.
Here.
Commissioner Beach.
Here.
And we have a full board.
Thank you. Can you also comment about any comment cards that were submitted for today's meeting?
Yes. We received several comments for today's meeting. The first was received on February 16th from Lynn Ferguson. Her topic is fair unfair. Her comments were traveling from the black counties like Ferguson, my neighborhood, is starkingly different from traveling from white areas. The Northern County buses take much longer even though more black people ride the buses than other groups of people. I also consistently see discrimination by drivers against black patrons more often as people who have paid fare and kicked off buses for no reason, even during holidays. This is totally unacceptable and we in the community demand answers and change. The fair is also a concern for people who don't have cards as it's potentially twice as expensive to pay a dollar for every bus when most routes take multiple buses. Eight two dollars and $2.50 to board the trains. Something must be done to help these patrons. I also fear for the safety of patrons as drivers have proven to be very quick to get officers involved with minor or even non-existent disagreements. I've been brought to tears by such events unfolding right before me. Overall, the unfair treatment of black people oftentimes by black workers is not conducive to better relations and happy trips, and this must be addressed immediately. The next letter we received, we actually received two letters, one from Citizens for Modern Transit on February 17th and one from the Transit Advisory Working Group on February 18th. These letters are lengthy letters, therefore President and CEO Roach had asked the groups if it would be acceptable to provide a summary. So in summary, the letter stated, significant progress has been made over the last year and a half and according to law enforcement statistics, crime has been significantly reduced, yet our work is not done and remains top priority. The MetroLink system supports both local and regional economies by connecting people to jobs, healthcare, education, shopping, and entertainment. Public confidence in a safe and secure system is critical to the long-term success of the public transit system. Also, on February 18th, we received a communication from James Fall representing the ATU 788. His topic was labor relations. I have been advised that this item is not appropriate for public comment under our board policy as it pertains to legal and labor negotiation matters. However, this correspondence has been forwarded to the board for review. In addition, on February 19th, we received a communication from Daniel Allen representing Galls LLC regarding a request for proposals. His comments were, on February 21st, 2021, Gwen Pinson, Galls LLC submitted an email request to Deborah Rowey, C.C. Barbara Enneking, Shirley Bryant Taylor, seeking comments and proposals associated with bi-state development request for proposal number 20-rfp-106742-dr. Title, Metro Operator TSM and Public Safety Uniforms, Section 22. Public documents of this RFP, page 10, issued March 16th, 2020 states, all proposals received are subject to public disclosure after opening. Will bi-state development provide this RFP information since, per the language in referenced RFP, it became to public disclosure after opening? As of 7:15 a.m. on Friday, February 19th, 2021, we have not received a response to our request. Thank you. That concludes the public comments we have received.
Thank you, Myra. Just to remind the board, public comments are not things that we discuss and we take the comments, we don't discuss them, but we do refer them to staff. Occasionally, the comments come back to us in the form of some kind of decision-making or some further discussion, but we as a board do not discuss public comments. I'll turn your attention to the next several items on the agenda. Several sets of minutes have been provided to review by the board under, excuse me, items number four through items number eight. I would prefer to address these items as a group if there are no objections. Hearing none, please note that as advised by General Counsel Barb Enneking in a memo dated February 17th, even if the commissioner is absent from the meeting for which minutes are being approved, the commissioner may still vote to approve the minutes after reviewing the minutes. Do any of the commissioners have corrections to be made, conditions, or anything else to the set of minutes? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of November 16th, 2020 special meeting, November 20th, 2020 board meeting, November 30th, 2020 special meeting, January 14th, 2021 special meeting, and January 22nd, 2021 special meeting as presented?
They're moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. We'll turn to item number nine, which is a report of the president, and I will ask President Talby Roach for comments.
Morning, everybody. Thank you for joining me. If you could be patient with me, I wrote down some of my comments just to be consistent on this specific issue. So as a follow-up to discussion of our last special meeting of the Safety and Security Committee, there have been concerns raised over some elements of the bi-state compact. In discussing these concerns with both the board chair and with the vice chair, I will move forward with putting a proposal together to examine the entire document, the intent of which would be to review BSD's compliance with the document and to suggest revisions to essentially modernize the document to more closely fit the detailed nature of our current security and safety operations. I'll work with staff on this task immediately and come to the board for approval of the creation of essentially an ad hoc committee to direct a plan which will include the provisions for the following three major items. One, conducting a third-party legal review, an independent legal review. Two, recommending and drafting any changes. Three, estimating the legislative scope and expense. Obviously, something of this nature would be detailed in time and expense. I'd like to add that this revision to the compact process would be a detailed and kind of long-term in nature, but I believe it would address some of the confusion surrounding several important legal provisions that have been brought up since our last board discussion and provide a clear and updated structure for our safety and security operations. The reason for thinking through a new committee is that this is a significant document and we would have a focus, and I think it makes a lot of sense. And in discussing this with both the chair and the vice chair, we thought this kind of a detail made sense, not only for the entire board, but also to look at the, about the depth and breadth of the entire document. So I wanted to concentrate my comments on that. And with that, that concludes my remarks this morning. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Talby. Are there any comments from the board about the, we don't need a vote, but I just wondered how people felt about the potential for looking at the compact in total and potentially voting as a board on any potential changes?
I, for one, and, you know, I'm fine with looking at it. We probably should have been looking at it for years, but I guess my biggest thing is, we already took a vote last, at the Security Subcommittee on one of the major issues that I think that is leading to violent crime on the system. And Mr. Zimmerman and myself are the only ones that voted that we would want to even change that. So it's not about the compact, it's about this board. It's about each and every member of this board. If you guys don't want to change it and you don't think that that makes it actually safer, then why are we going to spend a bunch of money, who knows how long it's going to take to change the wording of this thing if this board, if you commissioners don't want to change it? And you already said you didn't want to push it any further. And so that's where I'm confused. I'm all for looking at a compact and looking at a document and talking to congressmen and all that to get something changed to make it safer. But if each one of you don't think that that's safer, we changed it nine months ago. I don't, and that's where I'm still confused. How is it illegal? And for decades, we did it, for decades. And now all of a sudden, the same people that are representing us now say it's illegal. That doesn't make any sense to me and the public.
Other comments? There's a comment I'd like to make, which is, the report from the CEO is about looking at the document in its entirety. It's not just about looking at safety and security. So I think that's an important thing to do. It's a document that was certainly drafted by none of us and has been around for a long time and needs to be examined in full detail. I support that. I also support, if there are changes that this board conclusively decides need to be made, we can make a decision at that point about whether or not we take those decisions, we take those suggestions and proposals to our various, to three entities, the state of Missouri, the state of Illinois, and eventually the Congress. So because there's been many changes since the compact was developed in the 40s, I think it's important for us to look at it in totality, and perhaps we will decide that changes need to be made and perhaps we won't. Hearing no further comments, we can move on. I'd ask for a report of the Audit Finance and Administration Committee from Commissioner Zimmerman.
Yes, thank you. And just a quick heads up, I think I can get through this, but I just got an email that my entire law firm servers are going to reboot at 8:50. So if I get knocked off, I will get back in as soon as I can. So my apologies. But I'll be quick then. A virtual meeting of the Audit Finance and Administrative Committee was held on January 22nd, 2021, immediately following the Board of Commissioners special meeting. A draft minutes of that meeting are included in your board packet today under Agenda Item Number 10. At the January Committee Meeting, no new items were submitted for approval. However, several informational items were presented to the committee, including the IAD Status Report, second quarter fiscal year of 2021, the IAD SSO Status Report, fourth quarter calendar year 2020, the Treasury Safekeeping Accounts Audit, ending September 30th, 2020, the quarterly financial statement, first quarter, ending September 30th, 2020, the Treasurers Report, the Procurement Report, the 2020 Pension Valuations Update, as well as the 401K Plan Audit Update. This concludes my report for the Audit Finance Administration Committee meeting, and I will open the floor if anybody has any comments or questions. If not, I will pass it back to Chair Winmiller. All right, hearing none, I guess we're on to the next agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm glad we made it through without your server coming down. I'm going to give a report of the Operations Committee. If you bear with me a moment, I need to move to another screen. The Operations Committee held, held a meeting on January 22nd, 2021, immediately following the AFA Committee Meeting. The draft minutes of the meeting are included in your board packet today under Item Number 11. The Operations Committee is introducing four items on the consent agenda for your consideration today under Items Number 14, with the committee's recommendation of approval. These items include contract modifications, the contract with WSP USA, MetroLink Stations Enhancement, that's Resolution Number 1109, Metro Operators TSM and Public Safety Uniforms, Resolution 1110, MetroLink Downtown Tunnel Repair Design Contract Modification, Resolution 1111, and the Contract Award On-Call Public Relation and Media Services, Resolution Number 1112. At the January Committee Meeting, an Operations Report was also provided by Jessica Mufford Miller, Executive Director of Metro Transit. This concludes my report for the Operations Committee meeting. Are there any questions? Thank you. I'll move on now and ask Commissioner Simmons to provide a report of the Safety and Security Committee.
I'm having a problem getting this laptop to work here. Can, do you have a copy of that, Chair Winmiller? My screen keeps going blank and my battery's fully charged.
I do not, but.
Myra, do you have that?
I do.
Could you give that report for me, please?
Sure. A virtual meeting of the Safety and Security Committee was held on January 14th, 2021, immediately following the Board of Commissioners special meeting. The draft minutes of that meeting are included in your packet today under Item Number 12. At the January Committee Meeting, no items were submitted for approval. However, several informational items were presented to the committee, including introduction of St. Louis County Police Captain Melissa Webb as Police Task Force Commander, a presentation, exclusions under the Metro Transit System Ride and Abide Policy, a summary of media and community engagement efforts, an update on comprehensive training programs, and an update on safe system safety and bi-state development oversight. In addition, a special meeting of the Safety and Security Committee was held virtually on February 8th, 2021, at 9:00 a.m. Comments were provided by Kevin Scott, Director of Public Safety, regarding a recent security incident, and committee discussion was held regarding the current safety plan and proposed recommendations. This concludes the report of the Safety and Security Committee.
Thank you, Myra.
You're welcome.
Thank you. I'll ask if there are any adjustments to the consent agenda?
My only question would be on that last report. What was those proposed adjustments on security? Is that listed on there or?
I'm sorry, whom are you addressing your question?
The Security Subcommittee. Myra just read it. She says there was proposed changes to security. I was curious what those were.
So we did, excuse me, Commissioner, Chair, if you will? Okay. So there, I know that within that discussion, we went over several of those items and you did make a motion that was voted on. So that would be as an example of something that that did happen.
Okay, so it was that. Gotcha. I just didn't know, I just didn't know of any, anything that had changed. Okay.
No, sir, not, not to my recollection. So that, that would be the reference that I believe is being noted there.
Okay, I, thanks for the clarification.
Sure.
So I'll move back to the, if there are any adjustments to the consent agenda? Hearing none, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
They're moved.
I'll second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Item number 15. Talby, are there any unscheduled business announcements to be made?
I do not have any unscheduled business, Chair. I do, and would appreciate your patience. As, as I noted in an email to the full commission, Jessica Mufford Miller is going to be giving her next report and the next stops report, but is mostly concentrating on the vaccine efforts. She is on site. We're very excited about this opportunity. And with that, I ask you to pass to Jessica for item 16.
For the Operations Report?
Yes, ma'am.
I hate to butt in here, but we were told that if, if there, if there's nothing on the agenda, that we could talk and unschedule business at the last meeting. And the men went out, said that, you know, when I try to get an agenda item on, if you can't get an agenda item on, then you can discuss it during unscheduled business.
Did you bring that up with either the Chair or the Vice Chair or Talby prior to this meeting?
That, that I want to discuss unscheduled business? It's on the agenda already. What I'm saying is the memo that Ms. Enneking sent out to everybody about the last meeting, about the two agenda items that I wanted on the agenda that were left off the agenda, then you said, Ms. Winmiller, that no matter what, you can just talk about them in unscheduled business then. And that's what Ms. Enneking even said in the email. So I wasn't aware that I need to actually email you guys now. If I don't get the agenda item, now we have, if you're a board member, you have to email as well. Then who says that you're going to say we can't speak on an unscheduled business?
I did not indicate that you could speak up at any point about unscheduled business. What I did say is if you have unscheduled business, you can take it up, making sure that you, you do what the, what our board book and our board policies indicate is appropriate for unscheduled business. If you have something that you'd like to bring up, I'd like to ask if our board policy allows that at this point. And someone from either Barb or Talby need to address that.
So, so what, so what the, what the memo says, and I, Commissioner Cox, I disagree with you, and I think the memo makes clear, you made a request for items be put on the agenda, and we accommodated that request. And, and we simply disagree on that. That's fine. And so in that first issue, that's how we dealt with that issue. It is, it is absolutely true that just as an individual board member, you cannot speak for the entire board. And so then therefore, under the, under the procedures, it's simply a normal under unscheduled business. If you talk to the chair and, and ask, or of myself, that you want to add an, an issue to the, to the board agenda, then we will do so. In that case, you sent several different emails, and we attempted to recognize your request and put those items on the agenda. I believe that was done fairly and done fairly with the intent of what you were asking for. So I did ask our General Counsel to then address that specifically, because I disagree with your contention that it was ignored or that it was inaccurate. So she did so in that email directly to you. Then, and then if you want to put something on the agenda, we simply ask, ask me, and I can do so in setting the agenda, or you can ask whoever is the Chair of that specific committee that you want to speak in unscheduled business. That it's simply how we run the meeting and the structure so that it makes sense and that we're sure that the individual subjects are ones that we are prepared for and that we can talk about appropriately. That, that's just it. And we're just trying to make it clear.
Let me, let me just say that I agree with, I don't think that people should just bring up anything in unscheduled business like we were told last meeting. Okay, that was what was told. So what I'm saying is where we disagree is, I ask for a simple thing, a discussion on our security policy. Anybody that can, that can look at the agenda can see that did not make the regular agenda. It was put on at the last minute in executive session, which is fine. But then I was glad to see that other commissioners, one in particular, spoke up and says, we shouldn't be talking about this in closed session. That's illegal. That's why I asked for it in open session. That's why we, we went back to open session and discussed it. My whole point is, I wish the other commissioners in this board was with me because how do you know what my stance is on a certain matter? It could be anything. Same thing with you. Whatever item that you would like to have on the agenda, have on the agenda. I want to hear it. I want to hear what you have. And this was a very important subject to talk about. And frankly, speaking of the agenda, I am appalled and every single commissioner should be appalled. There's not a single thing on here about security. Not a single thing. We, this family should be upset. We should all be upset. We should be doing something. And it bugs me that we're not doing anything and we're not even discussing it because we're all scared to discuss it. We have a real problem and a disconnect with our writers and what we're being told. Our head of security said it is a war zone out there. We don't send our troops into a war zone with nothing to defend themselves. I'm sorry, I'm so passionate.
I'm passionate too. If you would allow me to speak, I can.
Executive session. Please stop referring to conversations that we have had and exposing information that was revealed in an executive session. It is completely inappropriate. I apologize if I interrupted you, Commissioner Gladney, but that needs to be said.
I, I agree, Chair, and I just, you know, I supported having that vote, and I think we should have had that vote last week. We had the vote. To say that nobody is concerned with, with, with security is nonsense. To say that we're not doing anything is nonsense. We just had, we are looking at establishing a new committee to look at the, to look at the compact to include security and everything else. We've been having conversations with law enforcement about this issue. This is ongoing. It hasn't changed. It is a disservice and it's disrespectful to your other colleagues on this board to somehow insinuate that we don't care about the security situation just because we didn't agree with the vote that you were allowed to have last week. You had your vote, it didn't pass. Now we are looking at security holistically, which is something everybody on this, I would never say that you don't care about security just because we disagree on an issue. To say that is offensive and it really hurts the comedy on the board and hurts us from being able to move forward.
Mr. Gladney, I never said that. I said I was appalled that there's nothing on the agenda. If you say, if you think that I meant that, then that's in your mind. I did not say that. I know that each one of us care about security and that's why we're here. We don't get paid. I'm here to try to protect people and I know you are too. We want a better system and all I'm saying is, I've been sitting and doing this for, for nine months on the same issue. I agree, we should all agree that we want better. I know we do. How to get there is the difference.
Madam Chair, I have a question. Commissioner Cox, can you refresh my memory on the vote on the security, how you voted?
On what? More specifically, what's your question?
On, on the armed guards? When you voted for the.
Nine months ago?
When you voted for the security contract, did you vote yes or no?
I have that video and.
And it's a simple question. Did you vote yes or no?
Break it out. You would not break it out.
Did you vote yes or no?
On, on the actual contract of the payment and everything, I voted yes.
Thank you.
Since we are obviously having a conversation about unscheduled business, are there other comments from the board, questions? Seeing none, what I would ask is that all board members, all commissioners. Seeing none, what I would ask is that all board members, all commissioners, if you have an unscheduled business item that you would like placed on the agenda, that you either take it up with the head of the committee to which it is it is assigned, the Board Chair or Talby Roach in advance of the meeting so that we can have an appropriate amount of time to digest it and to add it to the agenda. That is the appropriate way to do this, and if we didn't know that, then I'm saying no. Talby, is Jessica prepared for the operations report?
Yes, I believe she is with us. Thank you.
Commissioners, good morning. I'll be brief in my remarks. Today, I would like to use the operations report to provide you with a brief update on our COVID mitigation strategies. We have made a number of advancements just within the past week here at Metro. A week ago, we announced the introduction of a micro shield that is now being used on all of our buses, trains, and vans. This will create disinfected surfaces on our vehicles for a period of 30 days. This product called Zuno is one of our important tools that is allowing us to resume more normal operations and keep our customers and our team members safer. Today, I'm here at our Illinois Metro Bus facility to participate in the launch of our vaccination program. I am delighted that we can offer this program. This is the biggest and the most effective thing that we can do as an entity to protect our team members from the coronavirus and to keep our customers safer when using Metro Transit. We are unable to provide vaccines through a partnership with Eastside Health District, and I want to thank their President and CEO, Elizabeth Patton-Whiteside, for helping to make this happen. And we're also bolstered by staff who are working in throughout the last year, frankly, in many different stretch capacities, especially Metro Bus General Manager 20 East Winters and Marketing Vice President Ted Zimmerman. What we're doing here today at Illinois Metro Bus, and I'll I'll share a glimpse to give you a window into our world, is we are vaccinating 300 team members. We'll also be back with vaccinations on this coming Monday, the 22nd, and on Thursday, the 25th. We're using the Pfizer vaccine, and we are focused on encouraging our team members, not requiring, but encouraging our team members to access vaccination at this time. We have a strong incentive and employee communication program. With everything we do, equity is at the fore of our decision-making and communication. And so all of our management team is working very hard to ensure that our frontline team members, those who are serving our customers directly, have access to information, to scheduling systems, and to actually attending an appointment on one of the first three days of our vaccination program. We've had a strong response from our team, and I am delighted at some of the reactions that we're having. You can see, I think you're seeing General Manager, Assistant General Manager of Metro Bus Melvin Barkley here, who just got his vaccine this morning, and we are being supported by the Illinois National Guard. Are there any questions about our vaccination program?
I'd like to make a comment. I want to commend you and the others in management for focusing on this issue. And I want to congratulate you on your success in securing and administering the vaccine. I can tell you, as a university in part partner in a health system, it is not easy to get vaccine. There is more far more demand than there is availability at this point. It is critically important. It is a safety item. So thank you for your persistence in this. Congratulations on your success in it, and I admire you for it.
Thank you. And I want to mention to the commissioners, thank all of you for the contacts that you have made and continue to make to secure vaccinations on behalf of our team members. We have about 2,500 team members at ByState Development, not including our contract personnel. I don't anticipate that everyone will receive a vaccine in this first wave. So in advance, I appreciate your continued support and advocacy on behalf of ByState Metro Transit team members. Thank you.
Jessica, I want to just commend you working with Mrs. Whiteside at Eastside Health District. She has shared the pleasure it's been working with you and your staff on getting this done. So I think it just shows that teamwork pays off, and she was real excited to be able to help you.
Thank you.
Well, and let's let's make sure, Herb, Herb, thank you for all your good work in this, and please thank our friends in St. Clair County. This was a huge effort, and I know you'd never pat yourself on the back, but do it for me, okay?
I appreciate that. Thank you. Just get the needles in the arms.
Jessica, thank you so much for everything that you're doing. And I want to particularly be appreciative of our operators. The fact that they are now able to be vaccinated. I'm so proud of Illinois for doing this. I wish Missouri were more on the ball on this. I'll be honest with you. It's been much more difficult in this state. These are frontline workers. I'm very concerned about their safety. I'm very concerned about their health and the health of our customers. So thank you so much, and I can't wait for everyone to have both vaccines and for them to be safe for the foreseeable future. Any other comments? Thank you. Myra, can we have the dates for future meetings, please?
Yes, the next Audit Finance and Administration Committee Meeting will be held on Friday, March 19th at 8:30 a.m. The next Operations Committee Meeting will be held on Friday, March 19th, immediately following the Audit Finance Administration Committee at 9:30. The next Safety and Security Committee Meeting will be held on Thursday, April 8th at 8:30. And the next Board of Commissioners Meeting will be held on Friday, April 23rd at 8:30.
Thank you. I need a motion to move into executive session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, is this a voice vote?
It is a roll call vote. Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Zimmerman?
Yes.
Commissioner Winmiller?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Pistello?
Aye.
Commissioner Golladay?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
The motion passed.
Thank you. We'll adjourn, and we'll reopen in a few minutes.
We're ready to proceed. Thank.
Thank you, Brenda. The board has reconvened to the open session. Per board policy, no final action votes will be taken in closed executive session. For items requiring final action, a roll call vote shall be taken in open session. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the November 6, 2020 Special Meeting Executive Session? November 20th, 2020 Board Meeting Executive Session? November 30th, 2020 Meeting Executive Session? And January 14th, 2021 Special Meeting Executive Session is closed records?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Would you please call the roll, Myra?
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Zimmerman?
Yes.
Commissioner Winmiller?
Aye.
Commissioner Pistello?
Aye.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Golladay?
Yes.
Commissioner Gladney?
Aye.
The motion passed.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda item, A Surplus Property Declaration, 3158 Pershale Road, Ferguson, Missouri, Resolution Number 1113?
So moved.
Second.
You. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Beach?
Yes.
Commissioner Cox?
Yes.
Commissioner Winmiller?
Aye.
Commissioner Gladney?
Aye.
Commissioner Golladay?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Aye.
Commissioner Zimmerman?
Yes.
Commissioner Pistello?
Aye.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yes.
The motion passed.
Thank you. If there's no further business, I would request a motion to adjourn the regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
A voice vote's fine.
Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.